And the same thing with the budget. Now, you had said we were gonna do the budget in sections.
In sections.
So tonight we'll do the 001 fund, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I'm gonna let Stephen give his presentation and then I'm going to turn to the board members. I'm gonna start with Mr. Guy, go to Mr., uh, excuse me.
Mr. Guy.
Mr. Guy.
You look like George to me, don't you?
(laughing).
Mr. Clooney.
Mrs. Flaherty, and then I'll come to Mr. Guy.
Okay. Let me just start with a kind of a brief recap on where we are with the budget process. For today's meeting, there is no board action required. The next true action for the board will not be until the public hearing, which is, I believe it's August 17th.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. So basically, what that does is that leaves between now and then. Like, we're talking about to kind of split out the budget and have discussions, talk about, you know, different line items, talk about top level, however the board would like to proceed. Looking at the general fund overall, and the general fund starts on the agenda page 84. We'll get that switched out. And overall, again, the top level, the total revenues that are in right now for this version of the budget is about a little bit under 2.6, at 2.578. So that's your total revenues, and that includes the assessments, soccer park, dog park, RV, miscellaneous revenue, some interest income, and some other miscellaneous things. Obviously, we're, we build a balanced budget, so that your expenditures are gonna be the same dollar amount. And again, each, each department is within this budget. One of the other things that I wanted to point out, later on in the budget package, there is a very detailed breakdown of all the maintenance and repair line items. This is something we started last year, we continue with it.
Stephen, what did you use for that 2608-274 number? Is that the 500 and some per ea you base rate we approved last month?
Oh, yes. This is your approved budget.
That's, this is the, the peak.
This is your top, yep, absolutely. Your high watermark is in this budget. No additional changes were, were made to this budget since then on purpose, so that we don't start, you know, having musical numbers before the board has had an opportunity to kind of digest it. So absolutely.
Just for Kathy and I are the new ones, and she may know the answer. What is the reason for an explanation of a negative number tax collector property appraisal discounts? What is that?
Those are your early discounts. As a resident, you have the ability to pay your assessments early if you get a 4% discount.
Oh, like November, December?
November, December, January, February, and then, then obviously March, and then it becomes delinquent.
So it means less money for us?
Yes. Yeah, I just wanted to, to mention again, there, there's a lot of subschedules that go throughout this, this budget, and we don't have to go through every one of them today. But as you're doing this, obviously, the main schedules, agenda page 105 has your assessment summary that breaks out the O and M and shows you what it was last year. Just to kind of give you a point of reference as we go through this, right now, the general fund has an increase compared to last year of $79.63, or 18.17%. And again, at the Pelican Preserve, I won't, I won't mention that, going through that at another time. The staffing plan is in here as well. There are three new positions. Not all of them affect the general fund, but it just, because we didn't have a chance to, to really discuss this the last time, I just wanted to, to at least read them out once. There is a intern in the Park and Recs Department. It's part-time position. There is a seasonal summer pool attendant. That's also a part-time position. And the third one is another part-time position, utility building training. Again, that doesn't affect the general fund. The last two, the former two I mentioned would. And then, starting on page 109 is a detail of each of the repair and maintenance line items that are in the general fund.
Can we page to that, Chris? What, that page?
109.
107.
And that kind, that page is very critical, just because most of your increase in the general fund is not so much salaries and new positions and stuff. It's really about staff putting in some additional line items to catch up, to start doing a lot of the repairs that have been discussed. And so that, you know, is important page to look at, and again, that starts on page 109.
109. Go up one more. Chris, are, have you covered now all of the thi, 'cause general fund, then that gets into our aquatics, and that gets into our storm sores, correct?
Right.
Did, what kind of a reservation did we put in? You know, we were going, at one time, two years, three years ago, somebody made, and it's changed because of the SRF program, but we had an allowance, I believe, of $700,000 a year for five years. Obviously, that can be cut back because we're doing a lot of it now on SRF. But what is the number that we're budgeting for miscellaneous pond repair that's not SRF?
$124,000. $124,000.
That's all?
Is in the general fund.
I'm gonna tell her for a second.
Okay. So that means the majority of our work that's gotta pretty well fall under SRF. That's not very much money.
Correct.
What about?
Ed, Ed, can we let Stephen finish so that?
Oh, I thought he was, want questions on this.
Yeah, that's basically the, the core of your package. Keep in mind, right after your O and M budget is also your capital projects. We haven't talked about that. I'm just gonna mention, obviously, we'll have a meeting where that will basically be the discussion. And it's good, again, that's when the priorities start to have to be decided, you know. So, you know, when you're looking through some of this stuff, you wanna look at the projects. There's a very good page that summarizes the projects. Staff has started to look ahead. Right now, we have a, a lease day listing through 2022. It's bare bone right now. As we go, we'll, we'll keep filling that out. And again, that obviously is one of the priorities that the board has mentioned in terms of really filling out the capital improvement plan over five, six, seven years, so that we'll be able to fund those projects and start now, looking at it. So that's kind of the core of your budget package. From here, we can go through questions or kind of filter through anything.
Mr. Guy, I said I'd start with you, so.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Before I start, I want to be clear. Are we going to be voting tonight on things to, let's say, exclude from this first pass of the budget?
We can do that, if you might.
I'm, I'm asking this, we have other funds later on.
Correct.
And if we are going to talk about general fund in detail, and I suspect that's what we're gonna end up doing.
Right.
Then I, I would recommend that at some point, we have a vote on whether this item stays in as in the initial review, or whether it be increased or decreased.
Well, that, that general fund, the 500 and some dollars pre-au, 518, whatever the number was, that we approved last time is the peak? This only pertains to general fund one, correct?
I understand that, and I'm not suggesting that we change the total, the grand total. I'm talking about individual items.
Yeah.
Now, let me, let me start, and we'll see how it goes. I'm gonna go quickly, just.
I think this is our opportunity to, if a board member wants to change an amount, this is the time to lobby your fellow board members to see if that will flow.
Right. That's a good idea. I wanna, I just wanna start by saying, in a, in a general fund budget of almost $2.6 million, I don't wanna spend a lot of time talking about nickel and dime items, but I do wanna point out of some things that jumped out at me as I was going to do it. Under revenues, on page one, or whatever this is here, we have RV parking lot revenue projected in fiscal 17 of $10,710, if you folks are with me, and projected in the 2018 budget of $10,000. Significant, a not significant change, however, we had previously voted, I thought, that we were gonna spend a lot of money on a new RV parking lot. And if so, one would suspect that there will be additional revenue coming. I don't have anything else to say about that. And the next to the last item under revenue is storm water road review fees. And I'll be doggone if I cannot know what that is. If you go on down to operational administrative services, if you go halfway through that thing, halfway through that section, it says insurance, liability auto and property. You go over to, on that, you'll see that we're projected to spend $6,434 this year, and only 77 next year, although we just acquired two additional vehicles. Now, it's possible that those vehicles are gonna be somewhat, are gonna be used possibly for the enterprise fund.
Could be enterprise.
But an increase of just $1,300 for two additional vehicles, I'm not sure that's satisfactory. On page two.
Hey, Bill, can I add on to that, too? Where?
We'll get to you. I want him to go ahead and go through.
Well, if it, you know, if it's, if it's strictly on this.
If it's applicable to that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it's applicable.
Okay.
And it's just around in, in anticipation of, let's say, like, the Girl Scout building purchase, where does that potential increase in insurance, does that fall within purview of this?
I have built in across the board for a 10 to 15% increase in insurance for everything.
And you think that, that?
That should cover.
Okay.
And then I have put in, in a couple of the places, for some of the O and M items. I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna put too much in until that decision was made.
Yeah, okay.
Because there are, there are some other contingency lines where you could take it out of.
I just wanna make sure that it was, that it's accounted for.
But, but, do you want me to answer these, or?
Yes, before we move to the next page.
Sure. In cer, in terms of the insurance, those vehicles are split across both the general fund and the utility fund. So that's why you're only seeing a small portion in here, the bigger portion will be in there. The storm water, those are, those are the, it's a revenue that's charged, I think it's WCI for some of the reviews that Tetra Tech does. We do recover some of that. That's what's, you're showing up in the revenue line item.
Okay. May I go to the next page, Madam Chairman?
Yeah, and the RV parking lot, I'm assuming that since that isn't really, we don't know when it's gonna be.
It's not a set project. If you inflate that revenue line item, what it will do is it'll lower your assessments amount, and then if you come up short, or if the project gets postponed, then you could potentially come up short. We did have that discussion a little bit, and we just, we, we talked about it, we just didn't wanna be sure. We did increase, on the other hand, the soccer revenue.
Charlotte.
Which is a relation to the next time that that comes up. The direction from the board was to increase it. I still is very conservative with it. Again, with this miscellaneous revenue, if you, if you try and go too far or too high, it's gonna reduce your assessments, and then you'll come up short potentially. So I'm very conservative with those. I did als, I did increase the interest income from, oh, I didn't actually. No, I didn't, but I could. That's a place that I wanted to mention, I could. The interest rates are going up. So that is a place that if we, we need to find a little bit more money, we could increase that maybe to 20,000 or something.
They've been going up for eight years, and I haven't seen it yet.
Well, I, okay. I, I have seen it recently, so.
Oh, okay.
I have, they have been going up. Some of them, they're now over 1%. Some of them, 24 months, are getting closer to 1.5. It'll never be where it was.
I was gonna say.
But it's better than where it's been.
The good old days.
1.45 and stuff. So you wanted to look at page 85?
Now, I'm looking, I'm looking at my paper, so I'm, I'm a little.
Is that page two?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's page 85.
Page two. May I continue, Madam Chairman?
Go right ahead.
Under landscape services, I noticed that the payroll for salaries on that line item is substantially doubling from this year. And I suspect that there's a good reason for that, but I'd just like to hear it if you.
Sure. What are you looking at, Bill?
Say again?
The first line under landscape.
Under, under, yeah.
Landscape services?
I don't, do you see it?
You are paying to.
Under landscape services?
Whoever's running this has to move.
You gotta go down.
Has to move us up a little bit.
There's something missing here.
Yeah, go, whoops.
Go the other way. Go back up to page two. Clear to the top. Okay, there you go.
There we go. See, landscape services there, folks?
Yep, payroll.
Gotcha.
We're expecting to spend 12, 935 up to 25. That's a pretty substantial increase, and I'm.
It's a function, excuse me, it's a function of the allocations. Every year, staff goes through, looks at the allocations, the percentages of each position, and then they say, okay, general fund gets this much, utility fund gets this much. Within that, then I have to take it and put it into different departments. And what you'll, if you notice here, the landscape and the waterway management, they're the same amounts, 'cause I just took the total amount and divided it by two.
All right.
There's there, but there isn't, I think, to answer your question, there's no new positions going into that department, or the waterway management services department.
Okay, let's go down to pond bank maintenance. Pond bank maintenance is the last item on this page, going, going from zero to 124,000.
That's a new line item. That was actually what Mr. Tinkell had asked about earlier, in terms of how much was in the budget for miscellaneous pond work.
It's like washouts.
This then is.
Non-SRF.
Pond washed, the pond, pond worth that would not qualify for the SRF.
This would be more for miscellaneous stuff, trying to, again, not let some of these ponds get to where they are. If you can do a little bit each year, having a little bit of money in there gives Chris and his staff some more flexibility to do stuff, you know, 'cause once you, the SRF, what's in there is in there, in terms of the plans and stuff. This gives Chris and staff some more flexibility to do some little work.
If we're gonna put littorals in Magnolia Lake, would that come out of that?
Yes.
If we're gonna take care of the algae for, for, if it's gonna work, it's gonna be.
Well, there, there, again, I don't, I'm gonna let Chris answer the specifics on that, 'cause there are some other line items that, that we have the options of using, you know. But overall, again, it's, it's about trying to give a little bit more flexibility to do some more work that would not be as part of the state revolving loan.
We have a line item for aquagenics for chemical treatment and spray treatments for algae.
Is that beyond contract, Chris?
Yeah.
Like, change order work?
May I continue?
Go right ahead.
On the next page, folks, under precious recreation, the salaries are there, down by half, which I presume is the reciprocal of what you told me earlier.
There was one position that was in the general fund last year that was re-titled and re-classed to the utility fund. I forget which one it was, but that's why this is going way down.
Thank you. If you go down to the, excuse me, are you finished? I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, it's okay.
Go down to the bottom of that section, you'll discover that we're gonna spend $67,000 for the dog park and the, and a wash station. When we get, when we get to the point that we're gonna make motions.
Where are you seeing that, Bill?
To remove.
It's not showing up here.
Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Recreation.
Yes, we need to remove it.
Keep going up, please.
Right there.
There it is.
Dog wash stations and replacement.
Yeah, dog park, dog wash stations, replacement canopy, sod installation. That totals $67,000.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that is a lot more than I wanna spend on a dog park.
Sort of like a toilet seat.
I agree. That's right. And wrenches and everything else. So, Madam Chairman, at the appropriate time, I'm gonna make a motion to substantially reduce that.
Let me ask one question of Chris before we go there, maybe it's even Public Works. As far as the sod installation or sod replacement, I'm going to assume that the dog park does have to have some maintenance done to it. I don't know about a wash station.
Not much, not much.
So the, the maintenance and repairs.
That's not very much.
I think we need to have at least some money in there for that, but.
So, so two big ticket items is the problem?
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
That, what is that, an acre down there? What are we sodding, the whole acre?
It's 40.
$40,000 is a hell of a lot of money.
I know, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I think what he's looking at is putting the sod in, but then having some money to replace it, 'cause the dogs dig and tear it up, and it just isn't being replaced on a regular basis.
Well, you, you can use that logic if you wish. Personally, I would be embarrassed to try and justify or explain that to my constituents. And if you want to put some reasonable number in there, put the rest in, in some other category, I'm, I'm, I'm easy with that, but I, I just think that's a, an amount that I, I can't be comfortable with.
Well, here's the, here's the thing for me, and what I've kind of seen in the past, that there is, staff has a legitimate reason to put, put a cost in, but by the time it gets here, we don't have any visibility into it. So I, I would say if there's items that we question, Chris, if we can highlight those and have staff, if there's a legitimate business case.
Explain it.
Around it, if there's estimates that are tied to it, is this a swag? Or, you know, just give us some more detail so we can determine, oh, okay, now I understand the, the sod needs to be completely replaced, or whatever. If it's just patches, okay, well, that's, we just need a little bit more information. I don't wanna do it for every item, but there are some that I think, if, if there are questions, that we need some additional information.
I think the, I think the dog park is definitely one that.
Needs to leave some more attention?
Yeah.
On it, maybe, too, we could increase the fee, but I know what I hear from the, talking to the folks down there, is they go, it's a nice soccer field you have there, take real nice care of it, what about our dog park? You know, it looks like a dump, you never replace the sod here, but you're over there, you know, and it's not comparing apples to apples, but.
Yeah. Kids are peeing on the field, and.
Right.
You go, I don't know, they.
They may be.
They're, they're a vocal group.
I mean, it's a minute, we need to take care of it.
And it, it does need some work, and they had some trees along there that provided shade, and they were diseased, and we pulled them out, and we had all these people, why you pull out the only trees that were there? And there, there are a fair amount of people that come to that park from inside and outside the gate.
I mean, I'm just saying, we, if, can we get a little bit, a little bit more information on, on that line item?
Especially those two 20 and 40.
Yeah, the 20 and 40, I mean, that's really.
20 and the 40.
Yeah. The other stuff is, 'cause I know that there's gonna have to be some work done on it. There's gonna be, have to be some maintenance, and we don't wanna, you know, cut the budget to the bone, but at least where did the 20 and $40,000 come from? Was there a reasoning behind it?
All right, yes, and that's, you know, if.
Dollar square foot, one acre, 40,000.
If you wanna put some of that into a contingency account, that's fine with me, so you've got it all balanced out, but that's just.
That would almost be a parks and rec maintenance bucket, right?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's just too wild. May I go to the next page?
Go right ahead.
On page four, under roadway services, we are spending $50,000 more for fiscal 18 than we did in fiscal 17, and we don't have the roads anymore, or we won't have, or don't have, or shouldn't have.
Well, we'll have six, but we haven't got them yet.
That champagne's still on ice.
I think what Mr. Tinkell's talking about is, are the other streets.
Yeah, there's six that we are gonna get.
Those short segments.
These are the short segments.
Yes.
And $50,000?
Let me give you a little bit of.
Where, where are we at in this? Again, these sheets are.
Road service.
I'm sorry.
You're talking 25 and 25, Bill?
Yes.
Yes, roadway services is 25, two 25s there, whether it was anything this year.
Well, tree trimming is, there's no doubt about that, but.
I'm not talking about tree.
I'm trying to get 60, Bill.
Tree trimming and road turnover lights, signs and drainage.
That's 50, that's $50,000 that we're not spending this year, folks.
The first 25, the road turnover, repair and maintenance is mainly for streetlights. Basically, if a street light or sign is run over, the district is responsible.
We're talking subsequent to the conveyance.
Substantical, yes.
Okay, this is the streetlights, and as well as the, all the signs.
Well, one of the requirements were that they had to bring all of those roads up to standards, and they've done that. So then the only justification would be if one of them got hit by a car.
Correct.
So we're, we're guessing that the turnover lights, signs and drainage repair cost is 25,000.
There's also.
That's a very big number.
Well, keep in mind, Bill, one of those posts, about 1,500, 2,000 bucks.
That is a very big.
And the lights are about 3,000 bucks, so it doesn't take many.
Very big number.
Yeah, we've gotten.
And we've been tree trimming on Gateway Boulevard this year.
We've gotten four or five hit a year, and also with the county, it's 96 hours you have to replace that sign, or that street light.
So we gotta have an inventory.
So you have to have an inventory. We can't do what we were doing before, and order one, and six weeks later, it comes in, and then we put it up. So that, that, that's part of it, too, is having to keep that inventory on the end.
Tree trimming the oaks, 25,000 on Gateway Boulevard, that, there's a, there's a hell of a lot of oaks out there. That, that one isn't gonna go very far.
Well, and I, I should probably clarify that a little bit, too, because while they're taking over the roads and the sidewalks, if your oaks damage the sidewalks.
Yes.
You're repairing the sidewalks.
That's correct.
If your oak trees damage the storm drains, you're gonna be repairing that, so.
I understand that, and appreciate that, but is that new and different from what we're doing this year? Because there's, there's zero in that line item for this year, and 25 for fiscal 18.
Looks like we skipped a year.
Yeah.
And it?
That's not uncommon, every other year, for oaks.
Well, if you go back and look, it's 16 actual, there's nothing in there.
We skipped two years.
And I think that's right.
You amended your argument, are you?
I think that's right.
Anyway.
Probably because we were rebuilding the roads, thank you.
Probably because we were delinquent and missed it.
Madam Chairman, that ends my review of the general fund.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your consideration.
Mrs. Flaherty?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Bloom for doing this, for answering all my questions personally when I ask. I really do appreciate it, so.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna start on page 85, or page two. Okay, I'm going down to waterway management services, where it says wetland maintenance and wetland planting. Okay. It says that it's projected for us to use 37,000, but we're going to put in the budget for 124,000. I'm wondering what the big amount is, and we're doubling the plantings, and again, I'm concerned with that. Why are we doubling it, and why are we increasing if we're not using the money? Why is it being spent?
For the wetland maintenance, that line item includes some additional areas that would potentially be conveyed. We had put them in our current year's budget, they have not been conveyed. The two areas I'm referring to, Hampton Park and Daniels Preserve, you know, hopefully, again, they were put in this year's budget, and that's why you got the extra projection money this year. I, I don't know when they will or won't be.
Yeah, that, that, she's, she's right, that we redid the contracts, if you all recall, and it was a major cut in the wetland costs, went from about 50,000 down to 37, which I still question whether or not that company can perform for that price. But going to 124, adding Hampton Park and Daniels Preserve does not justify, something's Something's in there that we're missing. I think we need to have L. tell us what is she contemplating in there that would cause that to go from thirty-seven thousand to one-twenty-four? I could see it going from thirty-seven thousand to maybe fifty, fifty-five thousand.
Do we have some exotics that we're needing to clean up?
Well, no, we are not going to accept it, we made it clear to Lennar, we're not taking Hampton Park until they get it cleaned up.
I'm not talking about the ones that are going to be conveyed, but there may be some...
That's part of the original contract, so...
There may be some exotic cleanup in the ones that have already been handled.
Well, it's just probably if there's needs more information.
We need more information, yeah, I agree with her on that.
So who's keeping track of these?
I'm highlighting them in my file, I'm taking notes, too.
May I continue?
Go right ahead.
Okay, I'm going back to the same thing that Mr. Guy talked about, except I'm going to go a little farther. On the dog wash station, did a dog come in here and ask that he wanted a wash station? My first question is...
Actually, actually, there's, most of the larger dog parks in the county have wash stations at them. We've had a couple people ask us. There's dog wash stations in the major county parks.
Okay, because in Fort Myers, there isn't. I've gone through several of the dog parks and there isn't, and some don't even have benches, okay? However, to do, I did look them up, my little dog thing with the canopy, you need hot and cold water supply, sewage access, electricity. So that's a very, I mean, it's twenty thousand dollars. I don't think that is a priority. I mean, when we're looking at what we're spending on lathe restoration, so I don't feel that is a priority. Now, sod installation. I did look up sod prices because I thought that was very expensive, and the type of sod to use in a dog park was, they said, I have a St. Augustine. So I went through, and for a pallet, because it's forty thousand square feet that I did, and it comes to ten thousand dollars and four hundred, ten thousand, four hundred dollars to do that whole park. So I think that's also a little bit high. That was page eighteen.
Six.
Six, page three. So I agree with Mr. Guy that that's a lot of money that, when we have other priorities that should be considered.
Anything else?
Oh, no, I'm not finished yet, all right. Okay, page eighty-seven. All right? Holiday lighting and decoration. I am a big holiday person, however, last year, in two thousand sixteen, it was eleven thousand. We are now going up to twenty thousand. Okay, it was fifteen. I want to know, maybe we need to put this out to bid to a different person if it's, if this is really, I mean, to go seven thousand in one year is a lot of money. And I'm thinking we need to look for another vendor.
Is there additional electrical in that?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Additional electrical to facilitate lighting, that's going to be my guess. We've had that problem over in the HOA.
I'm just, just think that's a...
No, it should just be supplies and materials.
We must be lighting up something that we weren't lighting before. Well, we had a vendor that I know we were very disappointed with. And I have a feeling we changed vendors.
Well, I think we need to go look and change another one. I think that's just a lot of money, I mean, increase. So that's my opinion.
And just to piggyback on that, some of that lighting, honestly, it's not even locations where it's all that useful. We put something up by the pool, which we don't even use the pool for the tree lighting anymore. The tree lighting at the soccer park, little they turn it on, and it's not even visible from the road that much. I mean, I don't, if we're going to spend holiday lighting, I think we should do it in areas that is truly going to...
Monuments.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's one that the justification for the number should be...
Yeah, I've highlighted already.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And clarification on what the lighting plan is.
Right.
Okay, I'm going to skip one page and go back to it. I want to go to page one-ten. Okay, roadway services, where it says maintenance, repair, potholes. I thought we are putting the roads, giving it to the county, why do we have to do potholes?
No, it's the other six roads.
The six roads.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. All right, and now I'm going to page one-oh-seven.
One-oh-seven, how much?
It's this...
Staffing plan.
Staffing plan.
Okay.
What page is that on the...
Page twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Okay. All right, the intern for the seasonal soccer leagues, why do, I'm questioning why we need an intern for the seasonal soccer league? That's a new position, and I'm questioning why all of a sudden we need that. And I'm questioning, I have two extra people that are in the bottom part, and I'm questioning if why we need two extra people, and...
Where are you talking about, bottom part?
Bottom part, well, it's the last part before. It's under maintenance, utility specialists, there's two extra people.
Can you pan up a little bit?
Yeah. It's one-oh-seven, oh, it's under, it's got to go up.
The bottom half of the page, Chris.
Yeah.
I don't see it.
Chris, you got to scroll down a little bit.
Scroll up a little bit more, I'm sorry.
It's at the bottom of the page, just scroll down.
I'm playing, use the paper.
And the soccer intern we put in there to help administer the soccer leagues and the football leagues and all the use, and somebody who could come over and also work on weekends and do some of that administrative. That was the impetus for that position is because we really don't have a person here that does that. And we're looking at maybe getting a part-time...
That'd be a pass-through anyway.
Actually, it'd be a reduction, because we...
Probably, yeah.
Well, what was Anthony, how much, what was he allocated to part-time?
About seventy-five percent.
Okay, so that's going to be a cost save.
And sixty percent of his salary was being paid by the utility enterprise fund.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you. And I am questioning why we're hiring two extra people because we are increasing the salaries over two-hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And I know that part of it is because we reorganized, but that is an awful lot for people to accept the residents when they look at this budget.
What are you looking at on two extra people?
I'm counting, I counted from last year, two extra people.
Utility services.
Okay.
You're talking about the utility department?
Right.
Which is the enterprise fund.
Well, no, one of them is the manager, so, I mean, the person that was hired, so I figured out two, all right? I also would like to change the increase of the wage percent from three to two percent, and I already expressed that the cost of living last year was zero point zero-three percent, and the year before it was zero percent. So, you know, if we went along with cost of living, then that's where the wage increase would be, because that's how most places are.
Sure.
And the CPI doesn't include gas or food, that's just my comment.
But gas is going, but gas goes...
And remember, the three percent is merit, it's not an automatic, it's not a cost of living, it's a merit.
And I'll make a couple comments on those positions, because I basically moved some of those around, and what we did was when we hired Kenny and promoted him to utility manager, we took his spot and filled it with Isaac. And what we're doing right now is taking Terry's position, and we've been working with him to move him into a three-day-a-week position, starting in the next month or two, because he's not able to work forty hours a week. He hasn't worked forty hours a week in five years. And I took Anthony's position because utilities was funding sixty percent of that and moved it into a new utility collections distribution spot, which I fully expect that we're going to be in that forty-three to fifty thousand dollar a year price range for the kind of person that I'm looking at right now.
Chris, which one of those would we asterisk to indicate to be filled? This is what's confusing on this. We need an asterisk somehow to indicate new position. Which one of these eight or nine are the new ones?
You know, the utility billing trainee at the part-time is a new one.
Okay.
And the utility collections distribution would be a new position for utilities.
Forty-three, six-eighty and the fifteen-six are the two new positions.
And what I've done with that too is taken the utility worker that does a lot of maintenance work and shifted him over to do part-time work on the parks and maintenance on that side to make up for that maintenance work that Anthony was doing.
Just question aside to Kenny.
The utilities charge to the enterprise fund?
Does this include all of ours? Does this include all the ones you wanted budgeted? Okay.
There's no way. I'll wait for her.
Continue, Mrs. Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, and last thing I would like to say is because there is an increase, a total with all the benefits of three-hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four-hundred and thirty-two, we really need to look at that because I know that residents are going to say, well, that's a lot of money for employees because they're not, they don't have that money, and they're going to look at it in that kind of sense. Okay? And I am finished now, Madam Chair, thank you.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah, just a couple things. Around the, I think, website and newsletter, coming out of our board of dance, there was, Joe had presented a newsletter, the publication that he does quarterly, really well put together, and he indicated there's a lot of value. PR and communication is an ongoing issue for us. So I think he says annually, what is it, like seven grand to do four quarterly publications? And that was, I think that was, might have been a little bit of a swag, but...
I thought it was higher than that.
I think, I think that's about right, but I think we can find, I think we, or take that to print, we could have it done less expensive.
So, Chris, maybe there's just...
Well, keep in mind, we got one hell of a lot more residents, and he's got fifteen hundred residents, and we got seven thousand. So it's going to be a lot more.
And his was full color.
Color, that's the big deal right there, color.
And we can put ours in the utility bill, and say the postage and that.
I mean...
But that needs to be in there.
I think if, maybe we can just get some, get some initial estimates, Chris, on, basically, it's a two-page, well, actually, four-pager, color, six thousand times four as a starting point, and then we can always scale back.
And that would be the utility fund, that would be when we get to the enterprise fund, I think?
Probably could be shared between the twos, to tell you the truth.
Well, yeah, that's...
Because you've got a lot of that stormwater stuff that's going to be under the general fund.
So that could be a shared cost.
Could be a shared cost.
Send it out to everybody, basically.
Quarterly.
I mean, so that almost includes zero-zero-two, Pelican Preserve and some of the other ones.
Everyone, yeah.
Everyone, absolutely.
Right.
That's why I was...
I'll bring them over.
All right.
But, I mean, I don't know if you have any, if you guys have any experience with that, but anyway, we need to come up with something for that.
Sure.
If we just put a swag of ten K or whatever, but that is something that we need to definitely look at.
Well, if you want to do that, I'll just say, if you're going to put ten K into the budget that's not there now, you have to take, you have to find a line item that removes ten K.
Yeah, so we've earmarked a couple.
Put ten thousand dollars of sod at the dog park?
So, if you could just, if you could just put an asterisk by that line item, that it needs to be addressed and possibly increased, I'm just going to take a swag and say ten K.
Sure.
We could pull it from somewhere else. In addition to that, I'm not sure if the website expenses, that's probably just hosting, probably just bare minimum fees there. Normally, when you do a launch like that, like we did this year, that second year, you're going to spend some additional dollars in site enhancements. You're going to find things that we need that we didn't address, and from what I understand, we just picked up the old page and basically overlaid it to a new template with some design changes, but there may be some additional things. And I think if we're really pushing forward to drive communication, a centralized better user experience for our residents, we might want to look at earmarking some dollars for website enhancements. So, and I don't know exactly what April had on the plan there. Diane would probably have a good idea of what they didn't get done that they may want to, so I would just put an asterisk there and have Chris maybe talk to Diane, see if there's anything.
Okay.
As far as...
Again, that would be a shared cost, right?
Sure.
The way, go ahead.
With the facilities plan now, so we've got a new building, and we've got some dollars associated to renovations, there's a whole IT infrastructure that needs to be addressed.
Would that be a capital deal?
It could be. I'm just bringing it up, I don't know exactly where we're the best place to put that. It would be capital if we were, if we were completely adding something new, or I don't know if it would be, you know, maintenance, but I don't know.
If you remember, several months ago, April brought to the board a complete plan in terms of both the purchase of the building as well as the dollar amount to repair, and that included that.
Three hundred thousand or something.
I took that entire number, and it's in your capital plan right now. What we would need to cover outside of that and depend upon when everything goes online would be any additional IT operating costs.
All right, so we'll get that and cap them. So I will take a minute and talk about the, our head count and our employees. Based on your projections, Chris, and I love how we're repurposing and recycling head count, I still think that, you know, until the reorg is completely vetted out and you understand exactly all of your needs and what additional individuals you're going to need, I still think that estimate is very lean. I think in utilities and public works is at least three positions within those two areas.
We need a, we need a projected organizational chart, but I totally agree with you, we need those people.
And, you know, for Parks and Rec, we can leverage some interns. If we can leverage some interns in places, that's great. But where I think we need to also look at head count is, I mean, administration. You know, again, you go to two buildings, this new org structure is going to need, you're going to need an administrative assistant. I mean, it's different at Severn Trent, they got a management company, they got a full staff, this is you. So I think one head count that I would look at is administrative assistant for you and also support your public works and utilities. We haven't addressed, I mean, we're outsourcing IT, but you go two buildings with equipment, potentially either a cloud or server-based backup with document repository, all this kind of stuff. We're going to also need to look at having, you know, some type of IT support, whether it's part-time. I know we have INTECH today, but based on what I've heard, you know, if you have an issue, you got to put in a ticket, you got to wait for someone to come out. If you're on your computer and you're trying to do billing and you have an issue or something along those lines, IT is an issue that, an organization of our size to not have someone at least part-time to handle IT, I think is a waste, and there might be an opportunity to look at bringing someone that's IT, maybe has some website design or, you know, a multi-use type of person. Yeah, multipurpose. The other is also on that administrative side, you know, we've got customer service. We don't have anyone dedicated to be a customer service, no one really who's trained in HR. So I think there's more, my point is, this, our head count, I think, really needs to be addressed because as we expand, I think we've been operating probably at least five FTE under what we need to, and that shows through your resource capacity. If you were to truly do a measurement of the tasks that we have and the amount of time it takes to complete those, and the head count that we have, I would estimate that we're operating about a hundred and thirty percent, which is, you know, when you do head count, you really start it at eighty to eighty-five percent because you allot for time off and other unknown things. And that's just an estimate, I haven't done anything, but my, my point is, if you don't have the right staff to help you manage your business, we're going to continue to fail. We're not going to have accountability, we're not going to have subject matter experts and truly skilled individuals that know how to do their job better accountable. And it might cost a little money upfront, but the way that I do it is I look at cost saves, I look at quality, I look at things that will offset, that justify that head count expansion. So if a resident comes to me and say, "Why, I can't believe that you increased the budget two hundred thousand." Well, those two hundred thousand individuals will help through our plan, offset five hundred dollars, five hundred thousand dollars in X or Y, but we need to get to that point, because to Kathy's point, residents do go through this line by line. But if we're going to spend upwards of six, ten, twenty million dollars to redo our ponds, I think we can spend a hundred thousand, a hundred fifty thousand to make sure that somebody answers the phone to handle billing issues, that someone's out holding those pond workers accountable, that we've got the right staff. I think that's an investment we have to make. I'd be willing to cut other areas and sacrifice in some other areas, but I will not sacrifice on head count employees. And I will not go and tell L. or Mike or Kenny that I can't afford to give them a three percent increase when they're working their butts off out there in the rain, probably sixty-plus hours a week, over fifteen hundred dollars, because I just don't feel like that's what we should do. I'm just not in that kind of business. I think if we pay our staff appropriately, we train them, we hire the right staff, we will get that back tenfold. So, that's all I have to say about that.
And that's exactly what Joe Diserbo told us.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Tink?
Yeah, could you go to the line that's got that stormwater projection cost? I don't know what page it's on, one-oh-nine, I believe. I think you showed sixty-five thousand dollars for stormwater system repair and maintenance.
Bottom of page two on ours.
That, that is a drop in the bucket. We've spent three hundred grand in Silver Lakes and Stony Brook, or more, sixty-five thousand. That number needs to be a minimum doubled, minimum doubled. Or more, sixty-five thousand, that number needs to be a minimum doubled, minimum doubled.
That the pipe cleaning that Tyler was talking about?
Yeah, and I mean, we've got multiple other communities within Gateway that haven't been touched, and they're bad. They need to be fixed. I'd bump that up sixty-five thousand and more to a hundred and thirty thousand, and I'd take the sixty-five tentatively out of the wetland increase to the one twenty-four, because I don't think, I think that number's off about sixty-five thousand.
So can we back into that? Can we say?
That's what I just did.
Okay, so you know, so how many, how many, how do we?
Can we flip-flop those?
We have, we have a deal that I did years ago and probably would have to sit down with Tyler and go through it and start figuring out what the dollar value is based upon what we did at Stony Brook and Silver Lake and try to find out what a hundred and thirty thousand dollars would buy. Would it buy one community, two communities? Granted, Stony Brook and Silver Lake were the tip of the iceberg. They were the worst. But I know in my community, we got storm sewers that are partially clogged and have got to be cleaned out, and I'm sure the same thing applies.
What if we flip, we flip those amounts, wetland maintenance, sixty-five?
That's, that's in essence what we're doing.
Just flip those two numbers.
Okay, because what I'd like to know is, almost like we did with the ponds, let's assess how, what is, what's the linear photo whatever?
Yeah.
How many can we do and?
Well, this is all point repair, though, so we have to really look at the classifications and come up with a cost estimate. So we probably need to be working on that, Tyler, sometime to come up with that number. But I, I think a hundred and thirty thousand would be a reasonable number to start projecting.
Okay.
Then the other one is the litoral maintenance.
Time, timeout.
I'm sorry, Bill.
You wanna take the sixty-five stormwater system repair and maintenance to one thirty?
One thirty, and then take the one twenty-four, one eighty up above and reduce it by sixty-five.
Okay, so we have a wash?
Yes.
Well, not exactly.
No?
Yeah, I'm just gonna add sixty-five and take away sixty-five.
We're gonna add sixty-five to one thirty, would it take sixty-five off of one twenty-four?
Right. And I think that's where it's going to be when L gets done. And then I got a real question about the litoral maintenance, not that I'm arguing with it, ten thousand dollars on litoral maintenance. Are we talking about new laterals, or are we talking about installing, or are we talking about maintaining laterals? Because maintaining laterals would be under the wetland contract, or I'm sorry, under the pond contract, pond contract, not wetland contract. So I don't know which one that is. My guess is it's new laterals, and ten thousand dollars isn't gonna buy very much. But I don't have an answer of where to go.
Contract to do routine maintenance of lakes, is that, is that removal?
Our current lake contract with Aquagenics, if you recall, we had a section this year on litoral maintenance that we added into it. So that's why I don't think this ten thousand is for litoral maintenance. I think it's for new litoral placement. And if it is, I don't know how we arrived at it, but it isn't gonna buy much. It's not gonna buy much. We're running, if we put in three laterals per foot, and they're running somewhere installed a dollar, dollar and a half each, so that's five dollars a foot. That means you're gonna do two thousand feet of litoral placement ballpark.
We'll take it out of the dog park.
That's. That's not very much, but I don't have an answer, so I guess the question would be, Steve, to highlight, to find out what it is.
We'll go back into that and take a look at it.
And I, I don't have an answer to follow up on what Doug says, but I totally agree with everything he said on the Manning.
I wanna, I wanna go on record to say I agree also.
I think we're running so lean, it's, I was out there with Kenny today and seeing stuff and talking about this stuff. It's just phenomenal, the stuff we've gotta do on just the routine maintenance. We've got twenty-eight pump stations, and what I saw today was an eye-opener.
It's, we've been very lucky that we have gotten away as long as we have with doing so.
And I think our luck is running out.
And there was something that Chris said, and I just wanna call it out because I just, I love his thinking. He was saying there was, it's someone that you're, you're thinking about hiring and you did hire that had a background that was, I don't know if it was mechanical or whatever, I can't remember exactly, but he was just talking about having someone on staff that can do repairs, something that we, we would have to farm out or spend money or take time. We've got someone that's, can do that. Or, you know, someone that, you know, can do some carpentry or, or, you know, like the stalls in the bathroom that we spent fifteen thousand dollars on. If we had someone on staff that, you know, could drill, drill a couple holes and, you know, there, there is cost saves there, so that's, and that's why I like the way you're thinking with moving things around. I mean, you're really thinking about what, what work needs to be done, what the skill set you need to have it, and prioritize it, and I think that's exactly where we need to be.
And we're trying to get that skill set and build it up, and also when you're hiring contractors to do work and you're putting your bid packages together or overseeing them, have somebody that knows what needs to be done. And I'll, I'll also mention too, on the raises, and we went to merit raises, there was five or six employees that didn't get an increase at all strictly because of that policy.
And I would love that to be opposite. I want every employee to get, to get an, an, an increase because they're, they're doing above and beyond what they're supposed to be doing. They're showing cost saves, they're driving efficiency, and that's what we should want. We should celebrate when we, when we pay out performance-based.
Well, one of the things that I think is gonna work for us on the good side is, is that the predominance of these additional staff that I think we're talking about are gonna fall under enterprise. That, that'll help.
That's correct.
That'll help.
Did you have anything else on your budget?
Nope.
I'm, I'll finish this up, and I have to say that I agree. I've been saying for years that we don't have enough employees and that we're running the employees we have kinda ragged. We're, you know, we're, we're asking them to do the work of a person and a half. And, and we've got our level of service that the community really wants and should be getting, they're not getting. And it's because they can't do, they can't get, they just can't do it all. So we're looking at the reorganization because we're wanting to be at a certain level five years from now, and we've gotta start building it now to get there. So I agree with Doug. I don't know that we can add five positions the first budget year, but we've, but let, tell us, tell us what you really need, not what you think we can afford. Tell us what you want, and let's see if we can figure out a way to get that. The one thing, the only other thing, because everybody else pretty much handled it, was aerators. I was looking in here, where is there a place where we're adding aerators? The aerator maintenance of five thousand dollars, if we have to replace an aerator, that's like one aerator.
Right.
So that does not seem like nearly enough.
Purely maintenance, it can't be any installation.
Right.
And, and I think the long-term on that, we gotta look at SRF for that. We don't wanna take and have a capital cost of those type of things of going around and installing these and having those come out of our general fund. We wanna amortize that over the twenty years of that bond.
Yeah, we have, and again, it's more of a placeholder right now, but in the capital plan, there's ten thousand, there's an additional ten thousand for aerators for each year. But again.
Purely replacement.
It, yeah, that was for replacement, but then we were, we didn't put a big number in there because we were waiting on kind of a report and to see how we were gonna fund it. But again, this is ten thousand per year, it's not gonna do a whole lot either.
Yeah, because even, even replacing, that, that's like the replacement of two aerators if they go south. And in Stony Brook, we've got, I don't know, fifteen aerators altogether? I can't remember exactly, but that's one community, and we've got aerators throughout the community, so.
Yeah, we've got fifty ponds that don't have anything in them at all.
Right. And, and can that, can we put, install aerators out of the SRF?
Yeah, if you make it in the facility plan.
So we need to make sure we're doing that going forward. And that was all I had, and I just wanna thank everybody. I think that went well. Anybody have any additional comments?
One question for Stephen, and it's, I think it's somewhat associated with this that we're gonna get into. It's my understanding you brought over today the capital inventory.
An asset list.
Asset list.
Yeah, I emailed that to Chris.
What's your, you guys have been with us, what, three years? You took it up.
These are. Not what it feels like.
These are questions, these are, these are questions, I don't wanna make you feel like I've lead you into a corner, but that's what I'm trying to do.
Yes, I know what you're saying.
You can see that.
We have got a handful of getting in, as we talked at the workshop, of getting in and getting a handle on this asset management deal. And, but we're, we're starting with utilities. God only knows if the other stuff is gonna be enough, but the utilities largely are buried. What is your level of confidence in when you came in and took over as to the value, not the valuation, the quantification of assets that we have?
I can tell you from when we came in, we have a solid level of detail, you know, support what we provided Chris.
With the new stuff?
The new stuff.
What about what you inherited?
It's not bad, but I don't have a high level. I mean, I went through it again today before I sent it to Chris because I was curious. It's a lot better than what I've seen provided from the general fund and the Pelican Preserve side in terms of level of detail, and it's better.
This isn't going to get into oh-one yet, but when we start talking about oh-oh-one because of the fact it includes storm sewers, that is, boy, you talk about a gray area. That one really concerns me is about what we've got. I don't have an idea.
Even that report is really more from a financial standpoint for audits and stuff. It's not gonna get you to where you need to go in terms of for a reserve study, in terms of repair and maintenance. That, that's gonna have to be a, a study that gets done. I know Pelican Preserve is already working towards that.
They're asking these questions, that's why I bring it up.
You're gonna have to do one for the utility, one probably in conjunction with your rate study.
But our utilities would be inclusive of Pelican Preserve?
Exclusive.
For, for the portion that is ours?
Yes, oh yeah, absolutely.
The part of City Farm Meyer, I'm not worried about that.
No, no, no.
But the, the thing is, Tyler, you might have to check with Andy, but you guys did that exhaustive report in twenty-eleven, I believe. Where did he get all the numbers and the facts and the figures that developed that chart that we did? Because we gotta, we gotta, I'm worried about stormwater, and that implies to this here.
I, I mean, I'll check with him and where he got, I think a lot of that came from Johnson. A lot of that was the requisitions that were made originally, I think, right? Is where he got a lot of those numbers from.
Okay, well, the big one that impacts us here is stormwater, and I don't, we'll just have to look and see what you've got.
And then it'll be rate study?
I'm sorry, no, no, that's oh-one. Stormwater's on our capital.
We wanna do the stormwater fee.
I'd like to move it over to enterprise, yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm gonna move to supervisor comments at this time, and I'll start with Mrs. Flaherty.
Okay, thank you. I have a question. Did the chair send a letter to Trinity Church to thank them for the use of their facilities? And are you sending a letter to Gateway Greens to thank them for the use of your facility?
I did not, but I will be happy to do that if that would make, if that would please Mrs. Flaherty, I would do that.
We paid the country, but I don't, I don't know that you have to say.
I, I just think.
I thank them profusely.
Okay.
The other, I have a couple of things, I'm sorry. June eighth, we had, there are no minutes from June eighth, and we did make a motion, so.
They will be at the next, the next meeting.
Thank you very much. I did send an article to Lifestyle for next month, and the fence for Griffin Drive, we got a proposal quote from one place so far. It was eleven thousand dollars, but we still do realize that part is still WCI or Lennar.
Did you buy right out here?
Yeah.
The one, what, what kind of fence was it?
The one I got the quote for was a six-foot-high chain link with slats and gates.
Yeah.
So, you know, the decorative slats that go in, so that would be on your high end, and that's approximately seven hundred feet because you're going from the berm on the, on the south side, all the way over the edge of the church and then down to our first well, which is in Chamin.
That might be a little short, Chris, because I think the right-of-way, the FPL's six hundred itself.
Where are we talking about?
Right out here.
Where that white fence, BDC?
What, that white half?
On the FPL.
Are we trying to block the view?
No.
We're just getting, looking at options, you know, chain link with slats, you wanna put in just a plastic fence and.
Yeah, seven hundred, probably on the short side is probably more like eight hundred.
And we just, and we still need to know if they will pay for it because they still own a map property, or not. Okay, that's it. Thank you. Mr. Guy?
I have nothing except, I want you to be sure that all of the board members are in agreement, as am I, to move that sixty-five thousand dollars if Mr. Tinkle will accurately brought to our attention. And everybody okay with that? Because we, we want, we want Stephen to be comfy when he's making.
Well, that was somewhat conditioned that L doesn't come up with something we didn't know about and why it had to go to one twenty-four.
I just wanna make sure that we didn't have any objection. Other than that, I, I think we've had a very good meeting, and again, I wanna congratulate everybody on making this much progress.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I'll just make a couple of comments. I thought that the board advance went very well. It was nice to have open dialogues and structure, and I would just advise everyone to go back, you know, read through some of those documents, and let's make sure we're putting into practice those, those things that Joe had called out. For, for Stephen and for Chris, so I presented, this was an exercise that we did, it was a priority. Yeah, on the, yeah. We went through and kinda prioritized, prioritized. Prioritized items, so that's what this list is. Some of them are administrative organizational stuff, but there are some capital. So if you can just take a look at it, see, is it on the budget for next year? If not, maybe put.
I thought you were gonna put the ranking on here, with the stars.
Well, pretty much everything was, we, we were in agreement.
Where'd you get that, where'd you get that paper there that you had? The green, the colored one?
Yeah, I'll, I'm gonna send it out.
Okay, I don't have, oh, okay.
Chris did this one, he made that.
But what, what I want Chris to take a look, and I talked to him briefly, when we move forward and we have an item that's a capital project or initiative, I'd like for us to get in the habit of, you know, building a, a business case or some type of proposal where we're outlining what it is that we wanna do, what is the benefit, what's the scope, so we know exactly how to estimate it or, or get, you know, cost. What's the risk of not doing it? So if it's regulatory, are there fines? Will, you know, will something fail? Any impacts? Also, what's the funding source? So if we can get into the behavior that's coming up with information with some pre-estimates prior to, you know, coming to the board or as a fast follower, that will allow us to go through prioritization exercises to say, yep, I understand what, what this is, what it's gonna cost, what the impact. We need to make a decision on whether it needs to go on, you know, next year's budget, or is it something we wanna bump for, for this year? It'll just get us in, in a habit of having real information that we can make educated decisions based on prioritization and funding.
May I interrupt you for one moment?
Yes, sir, you may.
I agree a hundred percent, as long as we have some of this stuff in writing.
Yes.
We are, we are.
That's exactly what I'm talking about, Bill, is when something comes to your, you know, this has been vetted out, so even if it's, you know, Tetra Tech will go and they'll normally bring proposals, but I think even staff, before you even go to Tetra Tech, you know, we say, here's, here's our business case, here's why, you know, me or a member of staff, this is important, then we can hand this over to Tetra Tech, say, scope this out based on these requirements. The board can review it, and it gives us actual information that's tangible that we can, we can sink our teeth into. So it's just part of operational practices that we need to change.
Tony, Tony Brakes brought up a point. While we did the numbering and the math at the meeting, he said for us, in order to make it a legal action for this, we would need to make a resolution or motion. We're not ready to do that, are we?
No.
That's what I thought. The other thing I, the only thing I.
Really, all of that, we need to go through a prioritization, but some of those are probably already in the, in the proposed capital budget for next year. Okay, once again, because of the nature of the workshop versus.
Yeah, the, the other thing, and I've been talking to Tony on this and talked to Chris and others here and the staff, as a part of creating these records, one of the things that we don't have and we continue to need it to be able to do the work that we're doing on these ponds especially, and it's gonna come up on other issues, is a file of our development orders. I had staff and L made this for me. It's a list of all of our development orders, but we don't have any. Tony showed me how to go onto the website and just, we just pulled out one, Magnolia Lake, pulled out Magnolia Lake. It's Lee County Development Co.
I thought you meant our website.
Oh, no.
We need.
We can link to it though, if we want to. You may want to put it on the website, link to that site.
My question is, how do we, I certainly don't have the wherewithal to be able to go through and print off all this stuff. We need.
A documentary library.
I'm sorry?
We need a documentary library, a repository.
Yes, and, and the thing is, is that somebody, we don't have staff to do this stuff. We're gonna have to vendor, in my opinion. We're gonna have to vendor this out, have somebody go on there, and it's gotta be somebody who knows what the hell they're doing. Like the one we saw in Magnolia Lake, I don't know how many amendments there were on that thing.
From twenty entries.
And when you go and do it, and this has been a fallacy we've had here, somebody pulls out a development order and they think that that's it, and then we find out there was an amendment to it, the scrap. that scrapped everything that was pertinent to what we were talking about. We need to have, figure out how we can get some firm, if there is a firm, to go and download all this stuff for Gateway so we can do this and have that repository that you said. This is ridiculous, the way we're doing this.
Tyler has to volunteer to do it.
I, I was just going to tell you that you actually did hire Homontas about a year and a half ago, and they did that.
They did?
They did. You have it.
Is it on the web, on the old website?
Uh, I don't think it's on the website, but I've got a CD of it. I'm pretty sure, I mean, April has it. I don't know where it is now, but they did that.
It's on, it's on a PDF?
It, it's like a gigantic file because they pulled.
It's got to be huge.
It's on a disk, what you're saying, you know, in a file.
Can we get that, Tyler, so that then we can go through, check off and verify that we've got everything?
You have, there's like, okay, let me preface this. There's probably 600 development orders for Gateway.
Yes.
They found a lot of them. There's some that were, I think, in the old archived warehouse that, you know, don't exist anymore back from the 80s and 90s. But they found probably, I'll say, 90% of them. So you've got the vast majority of them. But yeah, you hired Homontas to do exactly that.
Chris, do you have that disk? Did you know about that disk? I forgot about, well, anyway, can we get it so we can start checking it out? Thank you. You've got a good memory.
That's what we, the whole infrastructure, I mean, there needs to be a shared drive or a cloud server that we have access to.
Got to have it.
Anything else?
I had nothing else.
Move the German.
I, well, I, your chairman has one item.
Buckle your seatbelt, Bill.
No, no, no. I just, I really did, it's a shame that you weren't at the board advance. It really was good. It was a great exercise. And I think that we're going to get better as an organization and I think we're going to get better as a board.
We are. We already have. We're making big progress.
I do. I just want to, I just want to reinforce one of the things that we did talk about at the advance. And that was learning to trust staff. And Chris should be the one that delegates projects or priorities to the staff once we set them. Instead of the board members going directly to staff, Chris needs to know what we as a board are requesting of staff. And we need to get better at utilizing our time in the board meetings better. So that we're not traveling out in the weeds. So I just wanted to reinforce that one more time. And I'm, I'm, I think we're leaps and bounds over where we were at this time last year. And that, on that note.
I move adjourned.
We are adjourned.
Thank you all very much.